I'd like to call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting. The first item is the roll call.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman. Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item would be item two, approving agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Did mine not take?
You got it up there.
I'm trying. I am pushing it.
It's not going?
It's not going.
Okay.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Seven yes. Item three is the hearing and adoption of the amended Municipal Housing Agency annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Is there any discussion? If not?
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and there's a second. Is anyone in the public would like to speak to this item? If not, please vote.
Little kid, Mike. I like that.
Your still isn't going.
I think I.
We got technical.
Technical difficulty.
Seven yes.
Item four, it's a hearing and adoption of proposed Municipal Housing Agency annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Is there any discussion? If not, is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item four.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item five is approving certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of the amended operating budget for all projects for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and of proposed operating budget for all projects for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Anyone wishing to speak? If not, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn for item six?
Move.
Been moved and seconded. Can we take a voice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting has been adjourned and we will reconvene as soon as we get done with proclamations for our five o'clock meeting, but we'll start with our proclamations.
I'm gonna try to turn it off and back on. We need the mic though.
It is now, so we will do, I think we have some little arbor boys that would like to come up. We have the crew of the forestry department come on up, and supporters of trees. We got some small planters here. Future foresters. Whereas this year marks the 152nd celebration of Arbor Day, a day set aside for planting trees for future generations to reap the benefits from, and whereas climate change is a complex problem that impacts all Iowans and our ability to thrive, and whereas the health and longevity of Des Moines trees are being affected by changing temperatures, precipitation, extreme weather events, and invasive species, and whereas Des Moines lost over 10,000 public space trees due to the Emerald Ash Bore and to the 2020 Durachio, potentially increasing CO2 emissions and contributing to urban heat islands, and whereas a healthy tree canopy decreases temperatures along streets, providing cooler spaces in the summertime for recreation and commerce. Shade from trees protect people from exposure to the sun and lowers heat-related illness, and whereas the city of Des Moines can help build a resilient community and reduce the negative impacts of climate change by increasing the number of trees being planted while also protecting and retaining our existing mature canopy for everyone to enjoy. Now therefore, I Connie Bozen on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day. I encourage everyone to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to plant and maintain our urban trees and woodlands. Just wanted, if you would like to say a few words?
Hey there, everyone. Shane McCullough, City Forester. I'd just like to thank, you know, this, we have a lot of great things going on here. We have Green Mayor and a bunch of people, Green councilors as well, which is great. Green Director of Public Works is a really good time to be in this city doing green stuff. We've been planting thousands of trees every year, thanks with Growing Futures over here, using local schoolchildren to put all the trees in the ground, which has been an amazing thing. Got an arborist over here that maintains the health of the trees day in, day out, doing a lot of work around the city. And in between all of that, there's so many people involved, so thanks everyone for coming out to this. And yeah, please, if you want a tree, you, City Forest is a place to start with, so thanks a lot.
We want to thank all of you guys for the work you're doing, and everybody, plant a tree. And we do have the tiny little trees. Do we still have any left?
Yeah, they go out.
In a cut.
Yeah, there's.
So secret, not so secret, there is a second chance giveaway after, we do have our tiny tree giveaway, so keep a lookout for that and don't tell anyone.
Okay, thank you again for everything you're doing and for the groups that are really helping make our tree canopy greater and larger, and just plant a tree. So thank you. Oh, okay. Do you want me to get this? Here, let me. You're welcome. Our next proclamation, is Matt here or is, I see Toby's here? Whoever's here for the fair housing? I was gonna say, wow, another big group. We have some important stuff going on in this city, and this is another very important item. So our next proclamation is for fair housing. Whereas April 11th marked the 56th anniversary of the enactment of the Fair Housing Act in 1968, which prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing nationwide on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and family status, and whereas the Iowa Civil Rights Act additionally prohibits housing discrimination on the basis of race, color, creed, sex, sexual orientation, gender, religion, national origin, disability, or family status. And whereas it is the purpose of the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission to receive and investigate discrimination complaints, formulate a comprehensive education program to eliminate discrimination, and to recommend ways to discourage prejudice, and whereas fair housing practices play a positive role in ensuring the well-being of all people in our community, and whereas economic growth, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and fairness, and whereas all members of our community are encouraged to raise awareness of fair housing practices to prevent discrimination and to ensure our community is welcoming and inclusive. Now therefore, I Connie Bozen on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month. So thank you. There you go. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, my name's Toby Elbury. I'm the Executive Director of the Polk County Housing Trust Fund. Just want to thank the council and city staff as well. Fair housing is such a critical thing for all community members to thrive and be successful, and we just appreciate the council and staff making this Fair Housing Month. So thank you very much.
And again, thank you for what you do at Polk County Housing Trust and all the groups that help make, ensure that we have fair housing for all of our citizens. Come on in. Okay. Okay. 2024 meeting to order, please take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen. Voss.
Here.
Coleman. Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended, and these are the following items. For BB and CC are withdrawn, inspections are incomplete, for HH withdrawn by applicant, for I has been added, it's a consideration of eight-month Special Class C liquor license beer/wine for Drake University Stadium at 2719 Forest Avenue pending approval of the building, electrical, fire, and zoning departments. I'm sponsoring by Mayor Bozen. Item six has been updated. It's a roll call subject to receiving executed contracts, and the regular agenda items, 65 is updated for the speaker's list.
Move approval.
There's a second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
The next item is approving the consent agenda. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately. And tonight we have 4K, Gatto abstains, 4T, 4Z, 4EE, Coleman's no. Item number seven, Coleman wants, wishes to speak. Item 29, Coleman wishes to speak. Item 32, Voss wishes to speak, and 35A, Coleman wishes to speak.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
We will now go to our hearings. The first one is 51. It's on vacation of a section of the north-south alley right-of-way located in the block bounded by New York and Corning Avenue and Seventh and Eighth Streets near 2814 Seventh Street and conveyance to Cold Storage Rehab LLC. A is a first consideration of ordinance above. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak? No, entertain a motion, or if there's any, entertain a motion from the council.
And 51A, in pursuant to 42A, waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 52 is on issuance of a replacement, quick lane D, conveying vacated alley right-of-way located at 2814 Seventh Street to Cold Storage Rehab LLC. Is there anyone wishing to speak? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 52.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 53 is dismissing hearing on a conveyance of city-owned property at 1916 Washington Avenue to Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity for redevelopment of housing. As this is a dismissable, there'll be no public comment on this item, so I will entertain a motion unless there's other discussion.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I thought I had asked this, and I apologize because I obviously didn't, but I don't understand, like, all the action says we're doing things, but the agenda item says we're dismissing it. Can you just clarify for sure what we're doing here? I was looking at Jeff and he didn't want me to.
Yeah, no, actually, I'm gonna have to ask staff to come in on this one because I'm not certain. Yeah, Lisa, if you would.
Lisa Krabs, I'm with the Federal Funds Division of Neighborhood Services. So all this is, this is, we're dismissing it for a technicality. So with the legal process that they're going through, there's a 120-day affidavit process to notify any interested parties, and there was some glitch and discrepancy between what Habitat's attorney thought and what our legal department advised. So it's basically dismissing this so that we can have the hearing 120 days later to make sure we clear a legal process.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move 53.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 54, on consideration of the recommended capital improvement program, CIP, for fiscal years 2024 through 25 through 2027 to 28, council communication number 24-153. Again, we'll accept Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there a motion from the council?
I'll move approval on item 54.
There's a second?
Seven.
Open up for discussion. Would anyone like to make any comments from the council?
I will later on 56.
I was just gonna make a couple of comments on, on the capital improvements project. I really appreciate all the work that staff does. I know everybody here does, but appreciate that. There, there are, there are a couple of things that, that I would like to just offer for the record, and I've mentioned most of these before. The first is Beaverdale Park. We were able to secure the next planned shelter for Beaverdale Park, and I appreciate that. There's also a lot of other work that has to be done, and the neighborhood's underway with some fundraising, and we're talking to some other funders. I would just, I'd like to just say for, you know, to be open and transparent, that I hope there's a chance that because of outside fundraising, we might be able to amend the budget to move that project further even earlier, and that would only happen if there's good news that there were, you know, big donors and a chance to generate some funds. That's number one. Number two, most of you have been talked to, Polk County did a study. We have some traffic and safety issues on Meredith Road between Beaver and Merle Hay Road. That's a priority for the residents that live out there in the neighborhood. I know there's a lot of work to be done, but one of the small steps that I've talked and mentioned to our city engineer, Steve, is to create a project line there to show Polk County that owns most of the land on the north side of the road that we're serious about trying to make some things happen. There, we're gonna have a, an emerging pedestrian safety issue. The council has approved the residential facility on the north side of the road there. If you know the area, it's by state north, and, you know, we're gonna have a whole lot of new residents. There's no sidewalks, there's no curb or gutter in that area. There's not good lighting. I think Connie and I both this morning said that we'd, you know, we'd love to more quickly, you know, prioritize the lighting. So I'd like long-term for there to be a, a budget line in there so that over time, we're, we're able to maybe try and secure some outside funding for that. And I'd love for that piece to be an amendment. We're, we're, we're voting on DART in the operational budget, right? So I'll save that comment. The last comment I have is, I've, I've been in conversations about one element of the sustainability report, that, that resource that we have for, for goals. People love the strawberries that are parked, planted in front of City Hall and our, our parks department. I know some of the arborists have left, but I want to make sure that there's the funds that are in the budget already for plantings and trees and other things are capable of also being plants, things that we grow out in our parks. It's one of the elements that's really zero cost, and I think there's a lot of talk in the community about trying to make that happen. So not asking for any action on that, but just to make sure that, you know, it's my intention that we try and do some of that and that in the budget, we, we have funds available, and that could be spread across a lot of departments. Those are my comments, and I'll either move or second it.
I moved it.
Just to add on to Chris's comments about Meredith Drive, I don't know that everyone knows that that's the border between the city of Des Moines and Polk County, so it's a shared, shared road, is that correct? Is that the right term? With, without curbs, it has ditches, and it's got a lot of traffic.
It's like an old country road that got fixed.
It's kind of like McKinley was.
Yeah. And so it, it's an interesting challenge how we're gonna improve that, so.
Because everything was built around.
Yeah, so.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? If not, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Okay, okay. Item 55 is on amendment to the annual budget for current fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, council communication number 24-153. Anyone, any comments? Is there a move?
I'll move it. Second.
Any comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded, please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 56, on proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, council communication number 24-153. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment? If not, entertain. That's why I didn't, is anyone wishing to speak from the public? If not, we will, if we could move and second, then we will have comments from the council.
If you want a motion.
I think, go ahead. I was just gonna.
I'll second it. I have some comments.
And now we'll open up to discussion.
Go ahead.
There, there's a lot to say, but I, I have to say, I very much appreciate all the time that's spent on the budget. We are lucky to have a finance team that, that not only is on top of the numbers, but presents it really well so that we can understand it. It sounds like nobody's gonna speak about the budget, which is amazing to me, the things where we'll get 30 people down here to talk about it, but we can spend a billion dollars tonight and nobody comes around. It, it's astonishing. I, I do feel as somebody that didn't watch this council work very deeply, I wasn't intricately involved, that, that we, that we started a lot of things over the night, over the last couple of years that are not gonna be sustainable in light of the state laws and in light of a changing downtown and other things. Scott and Nick, the finance director, and I had a little back and forth. It's, it's clear that on everybody's mind, to get through this, we're gonna need tax increases in the coming years. We're gonna have to go through a lot of cuts. And I, I, I just think that we need to be smart. So the, the first comment I, I want to say is, because I've been through this several times, I don't think there's any reason to wait to talk about how we fix it. And so I think in the coming months, whatever we might need to change, adjust, cut, it's, it's better to do it early than later because then we have to cut less the sooner that we do it. And so I would strongly encourage a process and maybe, Scott, you know, we got you for a couple more months, you can lay out a little process by which we can look at the major things and to begin to put guardrails on ourselves, and as the summer and fall wears on, we can get into more details. But, you know, I don't, I don't think we're facing anything like this, but, I mean, we've had years where we've eliminated 300 positions in, in the time I've been on the council. And so it's not uncommon for there have to be a reset, and, and I feel like we're there. We got a lot of really cool things and important things done. We got a lot of really cool things and important things done with ARPA funds and, you know, the one cent sales tax. But geez, we've gone through $200 million of one cent sales tax that we didn't have five years ago and $100 million worth of COVID or ARPA funds that we didn't have three years ago. Those are all new monies being spent. And now we're in a hole that we don't know how we're going to climb out of. We're no specifics. And so I think we have to be really wise. And I think there's just not any reason to shy away from being truthful to people because there's project after project and wish list after wish list that probably is going to have to be delayed in the coming years. And we're going to have to be really wise and smart and make sure that we all know what each other's priorities are. That's, that's number one. I can also tell you, you know, going through almost $300 million that we didn't expect five years ago, I don't see a situation where that the council or the city management can count on me to raise taxes next year. And, and so I think we really have to look at how do we adjust the budget? And how do we make that work? And I'll let other people talk about this. Connie's our lead on DART. But I think it's really good that in this budget, Scott found money to ensure that Des Moines is contributing a record amount to DART. Providing funds that come from our general fund is the first time we've ever done it. So it's unprecedented that we're doing it at all. And then to do it at a million and a half dollars is really extraordinary. And almost every time I open up social media or something, I see somebody criticizing the city for cutting funds to DART. Holy moly, we're doing anything but cutting funds. And this will be record funding levels by a long shot. The taxes that people pay from property taxes is going to be well over $9 million, well over $10 million, I think. I think it goes up $300,000 this year. And so $1,500,000 from the city manager's budget that we've been able to kind of pare back from other projects and $300,000 or more thousand dollars from property taxes. We're really doing our part and I feel, I feel really good about that. Those are the comments that I had on the budget. But I, I just want to go back to where I started. I think we have some real heavy lifting to do. It probably sounds stupid, but it's one of the reasons that attracted me to run for council again because I think, I think we need to have a team that trusts each other and works well together and that we tackle it head-on.
Mayor, if I could.
Okay. And I want to take more comments.
If I could answer each, each question as they get brought up so I don't lose track of them. I really appreciate the comments about how much work goes into these budgets. I think all of council does appreciate that. And likewise, I appreciate the attention that you, you as council members give to the budget because each time you dive into it, we end up with a better product for our residents. So I appreciate that as well. And your knowledge on, on the budgets is helpful. So one of the things that I do want the public to understand, and the city staff for that matter, is that we do plan out several years in understanding where revenue streams are going and the constraints that we have, do estimations to understand how expenses may be moving on us into the future. And what we've found is that we've planned well. We have given ourselves lots of options when it comes to the budget, i.e., we have stronger reserves than we've had in over 30 years. So we do have options there. We do have the new revenue stream with the sales tax that allows for, you know, both operational assists in the public safety realm as well as capital needs that can be used to address. However, we did have planned to remain having balanced budgets moving forward. But frankly, the legislative changes the past couple of years have forced the issue to rethink how those future plans look. And there's more limitations to those revenue streams. And so because of that, we are going to need to make difficult decisions. It's not like we weren't making appropriate projections all along. There have been, the rules have changed on us almost overnight in the last couple sessions. So we need to also adjust on that. We recognize that. And I would fully agree with starting early. We will do that. We've actually been planning on that. So look forward to actually more budget discussions this summer, earlier than usual, to address these and, and make some of those decisions exactly like Councilman Coleman has said. The earlier the better because it will end up with smaller cuts earlier on.
Thank you, Scott. Part of my comments is similar to the Councilman Coleman's. And I do appreciate all the hard work you and Nick and your team and all the department heads have put together. You know, this is, this is my 10th budget to vote on. And so we've, we've, we've had it, we've had it pretty nice where we've been able to keep the tax levy where it's been. And, and I'm very, very happy that we're able to do that. Just like, just like Councilman Coleman had said, the 200 million of sales tax, the 100 million of ARPA dollars. And you're right, they moved the goalpost on us. I think there was good planning. I think there, there's a lot of programs in place, but they are not sustainable. And so I'm hoping, you know, before, even before June 30th, that we're having the discussions. Because you're right, the earlier the better that we can make some of these cuts that we're going to need to make because they, we will need to do that. Because I won't be voting for a tax increase next year at all, not with the revenue that we've had, no matter what changes they've made at the State House. That is, that is not going to happen. So we'll have to move forward. And like you said, if we start early, then the cuts won't be so drastic at the end. And, you know, whoever is your predecessor steps in, hopefully, we can, we can get them off on the right foot for the next fiscal year by you giving some recommendations of some of these programs and some of the staffing levels that we're at right now. Some of those are probably going to have to change. And I, I understand that. I know we've had, we haven't had to do that since I've been on the council. But I know in the past that has had to happen. I don't think it's going to be anything near 300 positions. But there is going to be some positions that we're going to have to. And even, even with a fix at the Capitol of some sort, I do believe there is going to have to be. Some of the programs we put in place are not sustainable. So thank you again for all the work that you've done and staff has done. And we do have a balanced budget this time, and I'm very happy about that.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Councilman Mendel?
Well, yeah, I'd like to address some of the things that have been said. But I do want to acknowledge all of the work that staff has put into this, this budget. I agree with the sentiment in terms of the changes up at the Capitol are going to be impactful. And they're going to impact communities beyond Des Moines. So hopefully, the legislature will take the time to understand that and look at changes to mitigate that impact. But we'll have to deal with, deal with those issues regardless. I do want to take a moment to address DART. And I actually think that the action we're taking sort of fits in with the larger, the larger question too about how we balance the budget going forward. I don't think it's been a secret, and I might be alone on this on the council, which is why it's not up for discussion tonight. But I've been, I think the best way to approach DART for the long term, and I have thought this for quite some time, the legislature gave us a tool, which is the 2.5% franchise fee. And I think that is an effective tool. And we could, if we had chosen to use it this year, we could have worked with DART to provide both long-term sustainability. We could have provided a 10% reduction in our DART levy that would have been sustainable for a decade. And we could have created a pot for DART to help think creatively and improve service. Now, the other importance, because we did find an alternative. And, you know, Councilmember Coleman called that a record amount of funding. And it is, but, but I've heard, and there's sometimes games played with records amount of funding. It's kind of the equivalent when I hear Kim Reynolds talk about the education funding in her budget is a record amount. Technically true because it's increased year over year. But, you know, a 1% increase, it masks the fact that it is inadequate. And, and that's kind of what we're doing, in my opinion, on DART. We know that there's still going to be issues and likely require action with, with some franchise fee in the future. But more importantly, we're doing the 1.5 million and then a $2 million commitment from the general fund when at the same time, we're talking about the problems that we're going to have in the general fund in the future. And so having that tool and a tool that we are likely to use in the next two or three years, because I do think there is support for at least using some of that tool because there's a recognition of the importance of funding transit. Knowing that we have these problems and using general fund dollars that make every other decision more challenging later, I have concern with that. So I would have preferred that we take action on the franchise fee and free up that 1.5 million and that, that 2 million. I think we maybe have some opportunity to still do that. And I hope we'll, I hope that is part of what Councilmember Coleman was alluding to, that maybe we can have some of these discussions and figure some of this out because there's nothing that, as far as I know, nothing's stopping us from moving forward with the franchise fee sooner. And I know there have been some good developments from a regional perspective. We've got to act on that at MPO tomorrow. But there are dollars that I think the MPO executive committee has acted on that will provide one-time funding from, I think it's carbon mitigation funds or.
CPR.
Yeah. And that is helpful. And that's a testament to, you know, the leadership of the mayor and the folks on MPO as well as the folks at DART and the region, right? This is one of the first times that the region is chipping in more dollars, dollars that could be used for any number of projects, but chipping in for, for DART. And I think that's positive and we've got to recognize that. But I hope we have, we still have the ability to have conversation about the franchise fee because I think it plays into and can help with some of the issues that we are facing in the out years if we act on that sooner. So I wanted to put that out there for the record because it sounds like we're going to, we're going to be having some difficult conversations going forward. And I don't want to miss an opportunity to help make those conversations what I think would be a little easier.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the budget?
I'll just speak briefly. I'm, I'm glad that we were able to identify dollars this year to, to create the first two officers in a downtown police force. And I think that's one item that the community is going to see the results of. So I'm pleased that we could find the dollars this time around to add two additional downtown officers.
With that being said, I'll move item 56. Mayor.
And I just want to say too, thank you to the staff for all the work they do. Budgets are not easy. We know they're going to be difficult. And to let people know too, this isn't an issue of a Des Moines issue, small town issue. It's suburbs too. Fast-growing areas are still having issues. Everybody is. So hopefully, there'll be some modification and relooking at some of the, how they developed the tax decreases last year. And it's ongoing because I think it's an issue that everybody is talking about and how it impacts our community. And so again, thank you for all the work. And it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 57, on the proposition to authorize a lease agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $75,000 for the purpose of renting a bucket truck for the forestry department and to continue to the May 6, 2024 council meeting.
Move approval.
Please vote.
They were all here looking like they were working hard today. It's perfect timing.
Seven yes.
Probably could use that bucket truck. Item 58, on 2024 Hot Mix Asphalt HMA Residential Paving Program, Contract One, Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Inroads LLC, Joseph J. Manatt, CEO, for $695,711. Council Communication Number 24-169. A is the Approval of Contract and Bond. General Public May Comment Only to the Plans, Specifications, and Form of Documents, Engineers' Estimate, or Low Bidder Designation. And those will be the only comments to be considered to make. Two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak? If not.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 58, 58A.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 59, on 2024 Sidewalk and Pedestrian Ramp Replacement Program. Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as TK Concrete Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, $505,150. Council Communication Number 24-171. A is the Approval of the Contract and Bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this? If not, entertain.
See none, Your Honor. I'll move 59, 59A.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes. Mike, I think yours didn't show today. Mine is not showing at all, so that's why I'm.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 60 is on Locust Street Resurfacing from Des Moines River to Ninth Street. Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Jeffrey Rasmussen, President, $475,583. Council Communication Number 24-168. A is the Approval of the Contract and Bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to move items 60 and 68.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 61, on Southwest 56th Street Rehabilitation from Leyland Avenue to Walcott Circle. Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible Bidder as Inroads LLC, Joseph J. Manatt, CEO, $411,000 with $711. And Council Communication Number 24-170. A is the Approval of the Contract and Bond. Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll entertain most.
None, I'll move 61 and 61A.
Just a quick question on this one. So they were not able to find, I think we had a question in the council about a sidewalk along this street. And that is not part of this plan. Is that correct? That the last word? I don't know.
I have to ask Steve to come in specifically on this project.
We'll take a few minutes before they come in.
Our mayor, member of city council, Steve Neber, Des Moines resident, Des Moines city engineer. Question was about adding sidewalks on Southwest 56th. And so the, that would have to be done on, kind of go in the queue of the rest of the overall sidewalk program. This project is solely just to address. This project is solely just to address pavement condition and, and mill and overlay the roadway. So it's solely an asphalt contractor that's just going to, you know, remove the asphalt.
Anything we can, the neighborhood association about if a sidewalk, priority of that, is that pretty low, medium?
It'd be, it'd be pretty, it'd be pretty low from a, it would not be listed as a priority one sidewalk. So, I mean, we did add sidewalks along, along Watrous when we did that extension as part of the roadway, so they could at least get back to ultimately the trail that'll be along 63rd Street. But, but yeah, to add them on 56, I guess, you know, our hope would be when we program money, we do have visions to try and correct that real sharp S curve, that curve there. And so when we rebuild that road, we'd put in the sidewalks as part of that, that effort, and maybe we could extend it down, but there's not currently funding in the CIP to do that right now.
So I think the question from, from the Southwestern Hills leadership was, well, how do these new houses get built without having a sidewalk along them?
Along the frontage there? Yeah. I, I'll be honest, I'd have to investigate the history, but personally, I would agree with them. But I can't answer if, if this went through, if this was something that got waived through, through a process or not, you know?
So, so going forward, what is our general policy about new housing development in an area like this that was cornfield before?
Yeah.
So, so would they normally have to add sidewalks?
Yes, correct.
Okay. But this one somehow...
I, I don't have the history on whether, if this was something that, you know, staff said do this, and then they, they got it waived because it's a, it is a rural roadway.
It was not waived, but you might have to do it later. That wasn't part of the agreement.
We can find out and get...
Yeah.
That would be just good general information to have with the council, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
That's my only question, so thank you.
I believe it was moved and seconded.
Oh, we got a move, but honestly...
Second.
Second, sorry. It was a while ago. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
So that ends the hearings at 5:37. The next item, we'll go back to Councilman Coleman would like to speak on number seven, Professional Services Agreement with Kirkham Michael and Associates Incorporated for Professional Services for Douglas Avenue Improvements, Merle Hay Road to Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, not to exceed $606,860. It's Council Communication Number 24-162.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this. I am going to move it. A couple, a couple, just quick acknowledgements. This has been worked on for a decade. Iowa State and another, another firm had done some work on it. Originally, the, the goals of it was to try and make all the pedestrians down by Plaza Lanes, get across Euclid easier, and how can we beautify that? Well, Plaza Lanes unfortunately has been gone for half a decade now, and, but the neighborhoods from Merle Hay, Beavordale, Lower Beaver, and Prospect have worked on it, and they formed the Douglas Cordeur Coalition. And I just want to recognize them. I had a chance to, to talk to them about the project last week, the, the leaders of those neighborhood associations, and there's still tons of energy and, and, and positive things for this. The overall project is almost three miles, and it's, you know, eventually going to be almost $13 million all in. And I think it's, I think it's just really outstanding. And I, I had a lot of concerns about it a couple of weeks ago. The feedback on the pilot has been, a lot of people pretty stressed. Connie and I share some friendships with people that, that have had our ear about it, because I think what we've learned around, and I, I trust the city engineers and our traffic people, is that sometimes the pilots are supposed to simulate what things might look like eventually, but paint never, never does a great job with it. And it's probably, you know, a lesson for me and, and the city as to how we approach some of those pilots, because in this case, I think the pilot did more damage than positive, because in order for the pilot to work, you know, without going into a lot of details, at Merle Hay, Beaver, Lower Beaver, it went from four lanes to three lanes, three lanes to four lanes, four lanes to three lanes and back. And everywhere there was a pinch point, you know, it was a pretty dangerous place to be, but we weren't in a position to do permanent fixes. I have to hand it to the traffic and department and the engineers. I think they have a plan for each of those intersections that is far safer than it is right now, and I feel good about it. I would say so far, more people have been discouraged by the pilot than for it, so I, I think all of us are going out on a limb a little bit, trusting the engineers that they have a great plan, and we're going to deliver something that's positive. I feel confident about that. I'm not, I'm not backing away from it, but I, I did want to talk to the neighborhood folks about it. We are going to take it to three lanes all the way through. Kind of ironic that it's a state highway, wish we had more state money coming into it. But I think they have a plan to, to better maintain it, and I think it can be really positive. I, I would say that I have one really significant hesitation about it, and I'd like the council to wrestle with this a little bit. On previous projects where we've gone to three lanes, one of the obstacles that's really hard to manage are buses that stop in the drive-through lane. It's probably the number one controversy in Highland Park, you know, that could be. And, and I'm told that it's just a, you know, a philosophy of transit that, that we not do it. I've talked to our city engineers, they can speak for themselves, but I don't think they are in disagreement with my position, which is, we should design this so that we have some bump outs, and that we just work with DART to insist that they use those bump outs, whether it's eventually in Highland Park, or the one that's on 42nd by the Playhouse that, you know, we built and spent a lot of money on, but I don't think they ever use. I went through the DART schedule, and this is a three-mile stretch with one way. Everybody during rush hour is going to have to wait for the bus. There's two different bus routes that go through part of Douglas, so you know, you add them up, 705, 722, 725, 745, 807, 825, 845 are buses going down that street. Then they go different places, but people can be picked up there. That is a lot of waiting in rush hour and throughout the day not to deal with this. And I'd like our traffic rules to just be, you know, that, that, I, I think the pushback on this project and others will be so much if we can't manage the DART, that this could be the last four-to-three conversion we do that's on a bus route. And maybe that just has to be the solution, that we, that we can't do these on a bus route. But I'm willing to try this if the council, in the manager's office, will, will draw a hard line with DART, that if we build them, they have to use them. And even if it was a one-minute passing of a couple of dozen cars that are, that are waiting, but, you know, this could make the drive time, if we don't manage that well, this could make the drive time on, on Douglas significantly longer as they stop multiple times. I read that, I read that list, that's just one stop, but in that three miles, they're stopping about 12 times. And so, you know, it's going to be a long wait for people driving that. So I say that because I want to deal with it. I think it's a change that we have to make to DART policy, where, you know, we fund DART at a significant level. We've already talked about that. I, I hope that the council agrees with me on this, or, or it's just going to be a problem for us doing safety projects in the city. And even though we're getting started with this engineering, I really do think that it's a big enough problem. We shouldn't go forward with the four-to-three-way conversion and pull the plug on it sometime in design if we can't get an agreement on DART. I just think, I think we have to draw a hard line and make sure that we have a way to manage the traffic.
If I could just add, I completely agree with Chris on this item. We have a meeting on, on the 24th about the Euclid Avenue, and that is one of the biggest concerns that we've heard, is that traffic gets backed up, because the DART buses stop right, I mean, they just stop right in the middle of the road, and then traffic gets backed up. So I would, and I've said before, why can't we make the buses pull in and stop? You know, have a pull-in lane? So I completely would agree, I agree with you, and I would support that, and I would, I would hope that the city manager's office could take a look.
I think that one thing, go ahead, Councilman, and one, do you want to say?
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I think there might be other solutions that, that help solve some of the same, same concern. You know, one of the things that we see in other cities related to transit, and this wouldn't be quite that, but bus rapid transit lanes that give signal prioritization to, to a bus, because you can communicate through Wi-Fi, and that may be another way to solve some of the same issue with the queuing, if you give some of that signal prioritization after stops, and look at that type of technology. Might also be cheaper to, to use that technology than it would be to build, build the infrastructure piece of this. So I would hope that we'd be willing to look at a range of solutions to solve this, and that may be more in line with some of what we see from best practice in other places. But, but I'd, I'd be interested in, in a, in a solution like that. I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm in the exact same place on, on, on the other piece, but I do get that there are folks that have concerns about that, and I'm willing to work through and think through solutions to try and get there.
I think that's a great solution.
Councilman, Simonson?
We're going down a rabbit hole here, but it's an important rabbit hole, and I think the same, and I don't know enough about the possible two-way traffic downtown, but I've thought about the same thing. What happens when the DART buses don't pull over and they're blocking a lane? Just to add that to the thought process.
Well, it's Sixth Avenue too, so we have another street. But the pulling in and pulling out, I think is a safety, they'll say for DART, but I think it's all things that we, I'll turn it over to the manager to talk with traffic, and we will, and engineering, and see if there's some other alternatives on what we can do. And with that, is there any other comments? If not...
I'll, I'll move it. I'm excited about this, and I, I appreciate all the time that our engineering and traffic people gave me.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
The next item is 29, Request to Polk County Approving Development Agreements of Tax Sale Properties for Development and/or Rehabilitation of Housing, Council Communication Number 24-160. I will turn it over to Councilman Coleman, who has to speak on this.
This is one example of properties being transferred that the city is involved in. We give NFC and NDC money that, that have properties. I think given the current state of new legislation about the quality of buildings, it's a good opportunity for us to protect the neighborhoods, to make sure that the transactions that we have, have covenants or expectations in them. I think a private transaction should be immune to the way the legislation was written, and I would, I would, I would like to make, I'd like to make sure that we're continuing to try and hold standards to the zoning code that we worked so hard to pass, or higher. That's, that's number one, and that's related to this. But on a grander scale, Scott and Jeff, I, I do think we should have a plan and maybe a workshop this summer to talk about how we might fashion overlay districts and other things, make sure that we're calling the Invest ESM and Schmidt Districts and all that kind of stuff, make sure that they're all documented in a way that is meeting the state law. So I'll move this, but I, I just wanted to mention that we're going to have a chance parcel by parcel in, in several different ways to still benefit the residents of Des Moines by ensuring high-quality stuff is built there in their neighborhoods.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 32, Acknowledging Dissolution of Joint City Polk County Trails and Greenways Advisory Committee, Ag. Council Communication Number 24-156. Councilman Boss wanted to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor County, Mayor Connie, Mayor Connie.
It's close.
Sorry about that. I bet I'm not the first person.
I'm not saying anything.
Well, I'm especially fond, fond of this committee. I think, believe, this was the first city committee that I served on, started, I think it started its work in 2005, and I started serving on it in 2006. What I'm especially keen about this, well, it was a Polk County and city of Des Moines joint venture originally, and then eventually some other suburban communities joined in regional discussion about trails, and the greenways portion of that is, that would be the corridors along our streams and rivers, so. But you know what? Everybody and every person has a shelf life, and I think at this point, I think there were fewer than, around 40 miles in the city's network at the time that this started, and there are now 74. And so it's served its useful purpose to expand the trail network both in Des Moines and throughout the, the region. And with that, I will move approval of this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 35A, Abatement of Public Nuisances as follows. A is 1335th Avenue. And I, to continue and definitely continuing from the February 19, 2024 meeting. Oh, that was the, too energy, but sorry, sorry, sorry. I saw that. Okay, A, Mr. Councilman Coleman?
And I, I pulled it off, because I, I just looked up this property owner, and they have hundreds of properties that they own in Des Moines. I saw that in the paper not long ago, that they bought additional properties. And I, I do think that one of the most often, the most often criticism that I hear of the city is that we're not tough enough on the bad property owners, and I've, I've had numerous conversations with many of you about how we might be able to lock that down a little bit more. But here's a case that probably, you know, this property that we're declaring a nuisance is owned by the same people that have hundreds of rental license, and it'd be great if we could do something about not just individual properties, but the landlords themselves when they, when they run into a problem. Well, yeah, you know who it is, because they got a lot of money from the city a year ago.
But I think he's...
Okay, go ahead. Who would like to speak here? Go ahead, London.
Is, is transferring all the property over to, to the, to the other party. And I, I mean, I've had some issues with the city, has worked with them, and they're very responsive. Got one on First Avenue now, and zoning, and the new owner is very responsive. I don't know if that helps you at all.
It, it does help me a little bit, and since I asked for it to be pulled off, I learned some others. I'm not as lit up as I was before, but...
And I think Councilmember Coleman's point is well-taken. I mean, and I don't know if there are, I mean, there should be things that we can think about, right? If someone owns multiple properties and one of, one of them ends up as a nuisance abatement, maybe that triggers that other properties can't have the longer inspection time, right?
Right.
We do three-year versus five-year. I mean, I think there are ways that staff could, some small things that we could do that wouldn't be that painful, but that would provide a little more accountability, and give, give someone an incentive not to go down the path where one of their properties ends up... up on a nuisance list.
Okay.
That's, that's a great idea.
Manager took note of that? So is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 62. It's amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as Follows. Council Communication Number 24-164. A is parking restrictions on East Lacona Avenue between Southeast Sixth Street and Southeast Fourteenth Street. B is parking restriction on Lawn Woods Drive between Aurora Avenue and the dead end north of Aurora Avenue.
I'll move 62A and B pursuant to Rule 42A. I will waive the second and third reading.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven, yes.
Number 63 is amending Chapter 118 of the Municipal Code Relating to the Equivalent Residential Unit ERU Rate to be applied to residential and non-residential properties as the stormwater utility rate increases. A is final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by next hall finance director requires six votes. Any discussion on this?
Loop 63 and 63A.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 64 is amending Chapter 3 of the Municipal Code Relating to Administrative Appeals and Income Setoff Procedures. There's any discussion from the council?
Loop 64.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Pursuant to Rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
Please vote now that it's been amended. Yes. Yes.
Seven, yes.
The next item is the request to speak. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion, the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, or up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour. Speakers, speakers will be called forward individually and we ask everyone to please state their name, address, or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. It is our obligation to discuss only matters posted on the public agenda. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. I want to thank you for your support. And the first person is Raymond Jackson.
Hello, everyone. Do you have a projector?
You can put it right on.
I love these meetings because it reminds me of, all you guys do, the service and the time you put in.
State your name and address.
Raymond Jackson, 3409 Brookridge Court, Des Moines, Iowa, 50317.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's not.
It's not working?
Projector's not working?
Hold on just a second.
That technology.
Okay, we good?
It's not. I need to project, sorry. Yeah, it's not.
It might be tied to.
Wait, no. Let me try to zoom in.
It might be tied to my machine. Not working. There.
Is it going now?
Yeah.
Yep. Just real quick, a little bit about myself. I had my first child at 17, bought a house at 18, been a community leader, high school basketball coach for over 20 years. I've always helped the community and I've, I started my own business in 2009. In 2009, when I started that business, I did that as a DOT inspector because I saw the, the way that inspectors of both state, city, and county projects, they treat DBs a little bit different. A DVE is considered a disadvantaged business enterprise. It means we have some sorts of protections for established systems, sir, sir. Can I get you? Okay. We have some sorts of protections for established companies that, like on page 10 of your agenda, you have the same people getting the same projects over and over again. For instance, you had a Scott Street project that you guys approved last week, or obviously last month, and when you approved that project, instead of may open it up for a DVE or somebody new to create competition, lower the construction budget, that your, your engineering staff just stuffs that with a current contractor. Luckily enough, I did do the 2023 Des Moines Patching Project because I had the cheapest price. And when I submitted for the extra work order for the Scott Street that you added, Joseph Eddy himself denied my, my dollar amount. I'm sending the documents to each one of you per mail because it's too much to get into right now. But in May of '23, you did a contract compliance department, a contract compliance, and there's no adjustment in your document for the city engineers being the problem. Money goes to those that are established, that have, those have been here. And my company has to do things as cheap as possible just to get an opportunity. I have gotten several opportunities. That part of the system is working, but then I get into the actual project and things like this happen. Again, I'll send you guys all the information so that you can go through it because it's a lot of he said, she said. But I believe it's very relevant as you have no minorities in your engineering department, you have no minorities involved in the inspection of construction. I don't see, this is my fault because I should be sitting next to you if I care, you know, or at least running. You have no minority, no minority staff at the city. It's, it's all controlled by generational invites. And that makes it hard on a new company. But this instance that I'm going to send you, and here's page one, this is common practice for white companies, white-owned companies.
Thank you for your, if you need, we can follow up later. You're sending us information, so thank you for your time.
Yes, I'll send you the information. Please consider a DVE department within this because the city is the problem and that's why you have no African-American contractor.
Okay. Raquel Kintner? Carolyn Yulon Haake Walker?
And I think if I can, I don't know if this is gonna show on the projector or not, but there's a purpose for it.
You always bring us things. Yep.
I'm a school teacher.
I know, that's it. It shows.
My name is Carolyn Yulon Haake Walker. I live at 4111 Ingersoll Avenue in Des Moines. I was at the United Nations in New York a little over two weeks ago. I attended the UN, the 68th Commission on the Status of Women. I was representing the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, U.S. And my assignment, project as I attended, was to connect local to global. Here, I was in the presence of almost 10,000 women from all over the world. I decided my project was going to be, I know you're gonna be surprised, climate change. And I did because, first of all, in the, the last three years have been the hottest years ever on record, number one. And number two, scientists have come out again on the IPCC and said, we must cut climate pollution by at least 50% by 2030 to avoid the worst climate consequences. So I went, I decided to anecdotally interview as many women at the UN as I could before meetings started and at lunchtime I'd kind of sit by different people. And I interviewed about 20 women from six different continents. And I said, first question is, is climate change happening in your country right now, number one, and what are the problems? And all 20 women said, well, there was one man, said, yes, climate change is happening right now in our country across the six continents, including everything from droughts, floods, hot, hot heat waves, sea rise, more intense wildfires, crops dying, and people having to migrate. And seasons, this woman from London said, our seasons are no longer dependable anymore here in London. So our planet Earth is hurting, as I demonstrate here with the symbolic Band-Aids. But then I had to apply what I learned that day, that, that week, it was a week, to local. And so I decided to come back because the Des Moines Council passed in December the Climate Action Plan called ADAPT. And I want it to really be implemented from, and be a priority. So it's Earth Day in a week. So I decided to think, what could the city council do for Earth Day? What could residents do? And number one, city council needs to look seriously, even more seriously, at the DART financing. The reason being, we've got to increase DART ridership services and other services with DART if we're going to reach our 2030 goal.
Thank you.
And now I'll let Kelly talk about the nature solutions.
The next speaker is Kelly Borkman.
The ink and the light isn't the greatest on that. Low-tech solutions to our high-tech problems. Yeah, Kelly Borkman. I live at 2019 40th Street up in Beverdale. And so my story in Des Moines starts back in September of 2021, when I visited the city for the first time. I was moving here for a job. I was looking for my first home. And so never having been here before with both my parents, I'm from Indiana, so we drove eight hours. In the car with your parents is a great way to introduce yourself to a city. But the first thing that struck me was all the beautiful green space here. The rivers, the old trees. It's one of the things I love about Beverdale is that we have some beautiful old trees. But we also have wonderful yards. I have a almost four-year-old Australian shepherd. Very important to me that I have a good yard, good fence space. I was also coming from a 60-acre old rewilded farm. And so it was important to me to be able to grow things. I love native plants. Native plants are how our pollinators thrive and survive. It's how the wildlife that, as a professional wildlife advocate, it's my day job, live in this city and provide us with numerous, numerous benefits. My neighbors who have a green sea lawn, they also benefit from this. With my growing of over 75 different varieties of plants in my yard, I'm providing habitat for all of the small bugs and insects that help their yard be aerated and fertilized and thrive. So I'm here with the lovely ladies supporting No Mow, Less Mow May. I participate myself in my backyard because I have a dog. That yard can get pretty high, so I do less mow. I don't mow it as often, and when I do, I mow it at five inches, providing habitat for those small bugs that right now, as we're about to dip into lower temperatures, they need this in order to survive these cold temps. In the front yard, it's a little weedier, as some might say, there's violets and over 400 square feet of native plants and prairies that provide year-round habitat for butterflies and hummingbirds and sparrows and squirrels and chipmunks and everything else. My neighbors have seen the beauty that I bring to my yard with all native plantings and they have all started to implement native planting in themselves. I encourage this council and the city at large to find more ways to subsidize and increase native plants across the city. We were talking about earlier strawberries, right? There are also beautiful native plants. I lived, was in Germany last fall. They have our native plants in their cultivated beautiful beds. Purple comb flower, black eyes Susan's daisies. Other countries consider these plants beautiful and I believe we should too. It's time to spend more time, spend more money, and encourage education and implementation of native plants.
Thank you. Laura Farachi? Is Laura here? Is Laura here? Oh, sorry. I didn't. The applause.
My name is Laura Farachi. I'm here today on behalf of the Amos DART team. My Amos-affiliated institution is Grace UMC on 3700 Cottage Grove. The Amos DART team has been working to understand the recent DART funding shortfalls that came to light in November of 2023. Right away, we recognized any reduction in DART services was going to negatively impact many of our community leaders. Sorry, I have to get a breath. The last five months, we have been researching this issue and have been holding, holding meetings with a lot of you folks, sometimes twice. We've talked to stakeholders in other communities. We've brought to these people citizens who have real stories, real people who are gonna be adversely affected by DART service cuts. We have done our due diligence, as you know, Amos does, and we will continue to do so. We are not going anywhere. You also know that. Our position is no cuts to service. Many of us in Amos and around the city understand that a robust and accessible public transit system is vital to a well-rounded and thriving city. Frankly, this is embarrassing, that we're even cutting services and not actually making more. One thing we can all agree is the current funding model is unsustainable. We have heard several ideas of funding streams for DART over the last, you know, couple of months. There's using a new utility franchise fee, which seemed to have the support of at least three or four, although there was some waffling. A change to the funding model upping what the suburbs are paying seems fair. And now the possibility of corporate donations and maybe regional help. And I wrote this, of course, before Councilman Coleman talked about the money that you guys have now found. So thank you. That is showing leadership. So the city must step up, show leadership to the greater metro area. They're watching y'all. We want to avoid cuts to DART now. And as we reimagine DART over the next couple of years, these are really big conversations, hard ones. It sounds like plans that were made before the legislature did what it did have really impacted the budgets. We are ready for these big conversations. We are not going anywhere, so we will be partners with you guys. We will push you, cajole you, maybe even you, but we won't go anywhere and we are proud that you folks have stepped up. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Callanan?
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I live in Ward 3. First, I would like to request that the city should offer virtual hybrid access so that more residents can participate in these meetings. Our city is better when more voices are heard and public meetings should be accessible for everyone, not just the specific people who can make it to City Hall in person at 5:00 PM on Mondays. I'd also like to talk about DART. Want to be clear, the council today in the budget and generally is choosing not to fully fund DART. DART had specific requests and they were not met. The Iowa Legislature, as mentioned earlier, gave kind of a stamp of approval on the 2.5 cent franchise fee. And by rejecting that, the city is effectively taking a more conservative approach than the state legislature, the Iowa GOP even, is, is requesting for DART. City is giving a big amount of money at once, and that is good, the payout, but we know that it's going from the general fund. It's not something that's gonna be sustainable. It's also not a realistic solution to the DART issues. It's not really a partnership with DART. It's not working with them. It's not really taking a position, trying to talk to the public about just riding DART and getting ridership up. And to call this like a record historic, huge contribution is really being misleading to the public. Everybody here knows that there's going to be cuts to DART and it's strange to try to tell the public that we're having record-breaking funding, this and that, when, again, everybody here knows that that's not really telling the true story of what's happening. When DART services are cut, when people are riding, waiting longer for When DART services are cut, when people are waiting longer for buses, people aren't going to say, well, thank goodness we're funding them and paying more. And in fact, it kind of gives a worse impression. It's like buying a car but only having three tires on it. You're not getting, we're already putting into it, we're not getting the most we can out of the DART system when we're cutting services. There's a lot of systems in this city beyond just DART itself where we're planning roadways, we're planning housing along DART lines, and when we're having less services, that's going to affect everything in the city. And as we're trying to grow, if those services are being cut and the things we're planning around are suddenly not there as much as they're meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move 65A through F to receive and file our comments.
Yes. Entertainer motion to...
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Oh, yes.
Seven yes.
A motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting has been adjourned. Thank you.